All right, good evening, everyone. I'm glad you're all here. I would like to call the March 21st meeting of the Board of Education to order. All right. At this time, I would like to welcome Girl Scout Troop 8175 in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Well, that's always the best part of the meeting.
Absolutely.
But we've got more. We've got more. All right. Superintendent Beam, would you like to welcome everybody tonight?
Yes, it's my privilege to welcome to the podium the Principal of Nap Forest Elementary to provide the official welcome tonight, Mrs. Kristin Schuko. Mrs. Schuko, welcome.
Hello, FHPS Board of Education and community members. My name is Kristin Schuko, and I'm the very proud Principal of Nap Forest Elementary. We are so proud to have you with us this evening. We have so many wonderful things happening here for kids in our K-5 building. Tonight, we will zoom in on one impactful, student-centered instructional practice that we have collectively been focusing on together as a staff. WinTime is what I need time, and that is what we've collectively been focusing on. It's part of our multi-tiered systems of support. It aligns with our district's approach to systematic response to intervention for all students. Kicking off WinTime didn't just magically happen. Every staff member you see in this photo here committed to having all hands on deck during our grade levels' WinTime. Students are provided with opportunities to remediate or accelerate specific literacy skills at their own individual level during this targeted learning time. Each of our grade-level teams has put in an extensive effort toward learning how to maximize student success during WinTime. With the help of students and our third-grade team tonight, we are going to highlight the third-grade experience during WinTime on this lovely video.
Each learning cycle of students involves paraprofessionals and teachers studying student data, planning the learning, applying it with students, and then reflecting the impact it has on each student.
We started our first learning cycle in the fall in third grade by holding a half-day of collaborative data digging and planning for student groups. While collaborating around student data, the teachers, our principal, and our MTSS instructional coach utilized time to identify where to place students during WinTime. They were strategic in identifying research-based instructional tools to accelerate and remediate learning within the targeted half-hour of WinTime.
When student group building and the planning for instructions was ready, we were ready to take off with WinTime. You can see our small groups in action here.
You might notice, everyone has a purposeful place where they are spending their WinTime. Through careful planning by the teachers and paras, students are able to mix with students outside of their own classroom and work with teachers and paraprofessionals who they don't always get to spend time with. Everyone is getting exactly what they need during this time.
Each learning cycle lasts only a few weeks, and teachers continue to monitor our progress to maintain fluidity amongst our WinTime groups. We are never in the same group for a very long time because we move on from a skill once we have made significant growth in that area.
After the first several weeks of learning and WinTime, our teachers come together for a winter data meeting to look at student growth and plan for the next round of WinTime learning. They are so happy to be able to talk about each and every student when they are together and when they use multiple points of data to consider what student WinTime needs might be for the next learning cycle.
They really love to celebrate our growth as learners.
What I appreciate about WinTime at Nap Forest is our collaboration. From the first day, we were all in. We started by taking our data for all the students in third grade and placing it out on the table to see what our kids needed. And we decided to create groups based on where our students needed support. So we created a group for students who are ready for some acceleration. We created a group for students who needed remediation. And then we created groups and lessons for students that were on grade level to support their learning.
What I like about WinTime is that we came together as a new grade-level team this year with a common goal of reaching all third-grade students with what they need. And we played to our strengths as we formed our student groups.
I think one of the things that has helped third grade to have a very successful WinTime here at Nap Forest is that we have a consistent schedule where we have five paraprofessionals and five teachers who can support and meet the needs of our students all at the same time.
Hi, I'm Rainie Connor, and what has made WinTime work is having a regular routine where all third-grade students are assessed and also having time with my team to analyze that data and support students where they're ready to grow.
Hi, my name is Laura Kaminsky, and I would like to thank the administration for giving us the gift of time to plan and prepare lessons that are meaningful and intentional for our students. Thank you so much.
Our WinTime experiences this year have been successful because of the collaborative spirit and growth mindset of all involved. We are so grateful for those paraprofessionals and the flexibility they provide as they support the growth for students throughout the entire building every day.
WinTime has definitely importantly helped me with some words in reading and writing. So like, if you memorize a word from a book, you definitely can know how to spell it. But what I am working on right now in WinTime is definitely reading because when you're reading a word and you have it stuck in your head, like Holly said, you can definitely memorize it, and so you can write it better. So reading and writing has definitely helped me all the way from grade levels, and I really appreciate how the teachers are helping us and their enthusiasm with us.
WinTime is important because when you need help or like when you have a skill that you need a little more help with, the teachers will help you with it. And when you go out of that skill, they'll like, and then they move you on to another teacher to help you.
I'm working on reading definitely, and um, because like Sadie said, when you read, the word will get stuck in your head, and then you might remember it so you can write it and get it fluent. And with writing, when you write, you might learn that word, and then you can find it in your books. And it's really nice of the teachers that they are like helping us with this, and they're not just like doing other stuff. They're actually going and helping the kids with other stuff.
We're thankful for all the teachers that helped us at WinTime.
As we continue to grow and refine our best instructional practices around WinTime, we are committed to a growth mindset. As a token of appreciation for the support of this critically important work, we'd like to gift each board member with a copy of "Trying," written by Kobe Yamada. From the book, you'll read that this is a story for anyone who's ever felt like a beginner or had doubts or worried they weren't good enough. But if you believe, if you practice and press on, you can do amazing things. We are happy to share with you that we were able to create this video through the use of Studio within Canvas, our district's learning management system. Thank you for supporting our students and teachers as we continue our learning around multi-tiered systems of support and cultivating possibility.
Thank you, Kristin. Does anybody have questions for Kristin or comments? Mary? Any other comments, questions? So, oh, I know. Yes, yeah, go for it.
You know. I'll just say, my first grader does WinTime here at Nap Forest, and I don't know if he was going to be a naturally good reader. It didn't seem like it at the beginning, or the middle of kindergarten. He was working really hard, but I do think that WinTime has helped him grow tremendously. He talks about WinTime. He talks about when his groups change, and I think that he is in such a strong place with his reading fluency at this point in the year that I did not expect him to be at when he first entered first grade. So I do think it's making a huge difference.
Superintendent Beam, would you have anything you'd want to add about WinTime?
WinTime is great. It's, one of the things we're trying to do is bring it to more grade levels. It's common at the elementary level, but more and more, our middle school principals are talking about, how do we bring this program in? And of course, it changes each day as students are growing, as they maybe need to accelerate with something, or even if they need just one more explanation about that lesson from yesterday. Because we know the best time to close a gap is right when it emerges, not waiting weeks on end. And I just want to thank our teachers for all the hard work that they put in because it's really taking a whole collective responsibility, in this case, of all the kids who are in third grade or fourth grade or first grade. And that's a lot of work on the part of our teachers. But it builds a wider community where students are seeing one another all the time, that today, I may be struggling with something, and you may be accelerating on something, and those roles could be reversed the next day on that. And so that just normalizes all of our journey through learning new material.
Wonderful. A couple of things that stuck out at me was the words "time," and that's something that's so precious, and none of us have enough of. And the fact that you're able to do something this impactful with the students, and I know teachers are already time ninjas, so that's really great to hear that you appreciate the time, and then you've done this. And the collaboration. I know that the big people need to collaborate together while you're teaching little people to collaborate together. So the time and the collaboration is key, and hopefully, we can continue to support that environment.
I also just want to give a shout out and elevate our paraprofessionals because they come in and help in so many ways with our teachers and our students and our grade levels. Many hands make light work, and we are so blessed with wonderful teachers and wonderful instructional paraprofessionals that help in so many ways, too.
Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Well, let's keep the good times going here. We have a district report on social-emotional learning. Would you like to set that up for us?
Yes, absolutely. So, social and emotional learning is maybe a newer phrase, but it's something that is recognizable, I think, to anyone here in the audience. Back in my day, it might have been citizenship, or character education, or, and sports team that I may have played. How do you win with grace? How might you lose with grace? Sportsmanship. What happens when your emotions are getting to a point where you're really frustrated? And what might you be able to do? There are a lot of aspects of that. How do we engage as a community, as a group of people, as a group of students, where everyone's voice can be heard? So many different aspects of that. So, we have a wonderful counselor here. Our team of counselors across the district help out with social-emotional learning. And Cindy Reynolds, I'd like to call her forward. She's just going to explain a little bit more of what these lessons and experiences look like here at Nap Forest and things that we have across the district as well. Cindy, welcome. It's great to have you here today. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel funny not seeing everybody, but hello. Yeah, it's my honor to be here tonight just to talk for an hour. No, not really. Just to talk for a few minutes about social-emotional learning. A little humor to start you off with. So my name is Cindy Reynolds, and in case you're wondering, I am the best counselor never. That keeps me humble. I have that on my office door because I love kids, and it was a cute note that a kiddo wrote me. So, anyway. I feel like what Kristin already talked about, and Dan, with your introduction, we're already into a little bit of how social-emotional learning impacts us at school and in the classroom. But I will jump through my few pictures here. Kristin, it's not going. I'm hitting the down button. Julie? Somebody? I was noticing, though, during the WinTime presentation, some of the social-emotional learning targets we worked on at school, things like collaboration, teamwork, communication, perseverance, all those good things, and flexibility, which is what's happening right now. You want to just hit the arrow for me, Julie? Yeah. So I know that some people are a little confused, like, what is it? What does that really mean? This was a definition that I found that I liked. Social-emotional learning is the process of developing self-awareness, self-control, and interpersonal skills that are vital for school, work, and life success. People with strong social-emotional skills are better able to cope with everyday challenges and benefit them academically, professionally, and socially. And I would guess that all of us have been through some challenges in the last couple years that we can relate to this. So, yeah, I've got my Bitmoji in there because, you know, I work at an elementary school, and we like to keep it fun. But that's just a list of some of the things that I brainstormed that I know our counselors all across the district teach kiddos at age-appropriate levels. So, everything from self-esteem to conflict resolution, that's a big one. Handling worries, that's been especially big the last few years. We've had to really increase and ramp up how we help kids with those things, including respecting other people, community building, empathy and kindness, making good choices, growth mindset, which we've already heard a little bit about, body safety, size of problems and size of reaction. That's a big one that I try to remember myself. And then handling frustration and anger. Just a little bit of a list, an overview. The bottom line is that it all does connect. The social-emotional learning connects to the academics. When you can manage emotions, handle stress, and solve conflicts respectfully, that helps students achieve academically. And it also, most importantly, I think, helps us create a positive learning environment for everybody. If you don't have a positive learning environment at your school where kids feel physically and emotionally safe, no learning is going to go on. So, some of us know about Maslow's hierarchy, which I did put in there, and then I took out for the sake of time. But that's what it's really all about, is that we have to have those basic needs met so that we can learn. So, according to a recent Eastern High School graduate, also known as my daughter, I really did ask her, I said, what can you tell me about this? She goes, well, emotional skills are the most important ones you can have in life. That was her comment. But I just thought, as she's now in college and trying to navigate the college scene, knowing, having these good social-emotional learning skills, I think, help in that way, too. The brain is complex, right? We've got that left side where we have all those, the math and the science and all of those things, and then we have the soft skills, which are also very important. I will tell you, I have been to a number of, well, with my daughter doing her college search last year, and then I also, as a counselor to develop, going to professional development, I have to go to some things on careers. And every time I go on these little career professional developments, they are sending us to businesses. We went to a furniture factory once. We went to a computer business. It's very interesting when we ask the questions, how can we best prepare kids for a career in your business? Every single one of them talks about the soft skills. Of course, they want kids to be educated and trained. We all do. But they also talk about, we want people who know how to collaborate, know how to problem-solve, know how to communicate, know how to listen, how to get along with others. So that's always just reaffirming for me in my work with kids, even at a young age. So we know a lot of families try to teach these things at home, right? I mean, I know we do. But school is also the perfect place to practice them. You know, this is an environment where you're all of a sudden with 600 other children, and they're different than you are. And they have different backgrounds, or different families, or different skills and talents. And so, we have to practice these skills here, especially when it comes to getting along and conflict resolution. So, specifically at Nap Forest, we're doing something kind of different this year. Every month, well, first of all, thanks to our PTO, every teacher has these different posters. And if you walked around the building, you would see them posted, hopefully, in every single classroom. We are picking a monthly theme every month that we're focusing on. This month, it's Be Responsible. Last month, it was Be Respectful, and the list goes on and on. So every week, I'm putting together some mini lessons and sending them to teachers, trying to make them age-appropriate. They often include literature, maybe a short little video, I find, maybe a short activity or a poem they can do. And teachers are spending about 10 to 15 minutes a week implementing those lessons in that content. Most often, I think they're doing it during lunch because our kids have still been eating in the classroom. So it's a good way to do some learning at that time. Up in the library, our awesome library, I don't even want to call her an aide, library professional, media center professional, pulls out books that also fit the theme, and she's got those on display up there for people to check out. Kristin and I love to make some humorous videos, a little bit of fun for the kids, showing them examples and non-examples, which the kids always seem to get a kick out of. And it also provides us with some common language and learning across the building. I've said enough. You probably need to hear it from the kids because the kids, I think, say it best. So, a short video for a few minutes that I ran around and asked the kids some questions about the social-emotional learning.
SEL has always been important. This year at Nap Forest, our staff and students are all engaging in a school-wide focus each month, like being brave, being respectful, being responsible, showing empathy. Our teachers are able to easily weave these topics into the daily experiences of our students, and all students are hearing the same universal language as the main lessons or weekly videos are shared throughout the whole building.
SEL means social emotional learning.
You have a lot of words that can come out of your mouth, but use them wisely.
Social-emotional learning is like learning about your emotions and how you socialize with other people.
It's important to respect others because we all have differences, and it makes us unique.
Being grateful means, well, being grateful for what you have, and not being ungrateful for what you don't have. Being grateful means having a positive attitude.
In math class, I persevere when problems get hard, and I try not to give up.
Don't judge people for how you look. Judge them for how nice they are. Growth mindset. It means you have confidence, you don't give up, and you're not afraid to ask questions.
Understanding empathy helps me in my book because in my book, I have to put myself in my character's shoes and imagine how they're feeling.
Being generous is helping someone out when they're in need and just being kind to them.
Persevere means, if it's really hard, then just don't give up and keep trying.
Solving conflicts respectfully means that you should be kind to other people in ones, and when you get mad, you should just talk it out to the person that you're mad with.
Empathy is something that you care about someone and try walking their shoes to help your friend.
Being brave means doing what you're supposed to do whenever, even if you're scared.
If you need help or if you're confused at a problem, you have to be honest and polite, ask the input for your two key things, and being a good student. Being a good student means being honest with your teacher if you need help.
Responsibility means if your bedroom's not clean, you can clean it.
Being respectful means treating other people the way you want to be treated and not treating them bad.
Kindness means when like, when somebody's sad, you help them.
Social-emotional learning is important because we teach the whole child. And focusing on building community and building grit and growth mindset and thinking about what we do in tricky situations really helps kids academically. School is so much more than just learning, reading, writing, math, science, and so helping them navigate the whole school day and giving them the tools to do that is so important for their success.
It took about three takes to get those kids to say be kind, almost in unison. We worked on it. I want to just wrap it up by, there's one last slide. Can I just show them real quickly at the end? Again, we weave this into what we do in the classroom. It's not a separate entity. And as I was reflecting, here's just a few of the thoughts that I had. We persevere when learning is hard. We have empathy when we learn history and when we try to understand characters. We have bravery when we ask for help. We respect, we have respect for each other, our teachers and ourselves, to help create a positive learning environment. We're humble and kind when we help others and when we collaborate. And we are responsible when we do our work, and perhaps, most importantly, bring our planners home. So, just a little glimpse into what we do here at Nap Forest to try to support the learning. Thanks.
Thank you, Cindy. That was wonderful. Does anybody have any questions or feedback, comments?
I don't have any questions, but I did want to mention, Cindy, I think this was such an important presentation. And what really stuck out to me as a teacher myself in my classroom is how you pointed out that although these are things that are taught in the home, it's practiced at school, and it's tough. It's tough for the students to really put these into practice, especially that big reaction one. But all of that practice is really important, and I love that the schools here at Forest Hills have it in place that the students are practicing this consistently. I just, I loved your presentation. Nice job.
Thank you. This definitely is the workplace environment for the students, so this is a place to practice that. This is their job every day. They come to school, so they have to practice all of these things. Any other comments?
Yeah, I was going to say, I love what you're doing here at the elementary level because you have these building blocks where you're starting young, but these are things that are so important even as you work your way up through middle school and high school. And, you know, my older kids, I see it, and I'm like, boy, they still need work on some of these areas. So it's great that you're starting them and getting the buy-in at this level of how important this is because it does carry on all the way through high school and college and beyond.
Excellent.
Wait, I do want to add one other little thing to that. Also pointing out, common language, that is so important, even as you point out that the student's buy-in comes from them understanding the terms being used here and knowing that it is for their benefit. So I love that you brought up common language as well.
Any other comments? Mrs. Vong?
Yes.
She's itching over there, I guess.
Yep. So well-timed because a number of us at the table were so pleased to be invited to a presentation held at the Cascade Library about what might be out there in our community this day and age about social-emotional learning. And I have the pleasure of supporting the district with its substance abuse prevention program, and I get to wander the hallways and see this work in action all the time. And Cindy and Kristin, I'm so grateful to you for bringing up some terms we heard the other day that might have led to some confusion. But obviously, multi-tiered systems of support are making sure all of our kids have the skills to be 21st century learners, right?
to be 21st century learners, right?
Yep. And I heard a lot of the catchphrases when I help with that program. It's about honoring self-esteem and healthy relationships, good decision-making, ability to refuse peer pressure. So I am so grateful to you and Kristin for helping us remember and reminding us about the really great work you're all doing to help our kids go out into a crazy world and make it a better place and feel good about themselves. So thank you.
Excellent. Superintendent Beam?
Yeah, I would just also add, as I have the great privilege of learning from our teachers, our counselors, our social workers and others, and as they've also introduced me to people who study the brain a little bit more, and you talked about this a little bit, Cindy, is that if we, if there's sort of an unmet emotional need, or if a student is feeling socially that, boy, I just don't belong in this space, that emotion, that feeling acts as a block to the learning part of the brain. And we've been able to see this with functional MRI studies on this as well. So we are all about all of these things in the whole child, but we want kids to learn math, be great readers and writers. And we know that if we can tend to these pieces, then we open that gateway to that learning as well. So our teachers, again, work with the whole child in all these aspects. And again, I'm just grateful to be able to learn from all of them through this as well.
Wonderful. Again, I think we should give an applause to our presenters for this evening. Thank you. All right. Well, that was definitely the best part of the meeting, but we do have some business ahead of us, so I think we should move on in our agenda. The next item we have here is an election of a board officer. We need to fill the role of vice president, and so I'm seeking a motion to, for this election.
Well, you know, being that I've been around for a while, I understand Mrs. Tryant has been asked to step in as curricular chair, and I know Mrs. Gregory and Mrs. Covell are both serving an officer position, so it would seem appropriate that Dr. Fosson, if you're comfortable with that, you would be a wonderful vice president at this point in time. I don't know what the rest of you think about that, but that is my suggestion.
I certainly second that suggestion. I think it would be excellent for Dr. Fosson to step into this position, if you're willing.
I definitely have some big shoes to fill, but I would be very honored to be vice president. That's what the board would like to do.
Excellent.
Then I will formally make a motion that Dr. Fosson serve as vice president of our board from here on out.
And do I have a second?
Aye, second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. There we go. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is to move into our consent grouping. So I guess I need to start first with a motion to approve the consent grouping. Would someone like to make that motion?
Oopsie. I move approve consent grouping items 7A through C.
And I need a second?
I'll second.
Okay. At this time, I will turn it over to you, Superintendent Beam. If you would like to call out a couple of things, I know we specifically would like to talk about this board policy, and then anything else you want to draw our attention to?
Sure. Just a couple of items in the consent grouping tonight I want to highlight. We are making a recommendation for a revision to an existing board policy. That has to do with our instructional materials, and that is Board Policy 5407: Instructional Program and Curriculum Development, and this is a revision to the existing policy. Some years ago, we worked with a different policy, school district policy provider called Neola, which is helping states throughout the Midwest with board policies. And more recently, we've migrated to a Michigan-based policy provider on this. And our old policy provider had much more detail in this area, and the new policy provider had some information, but not the detail that we were used to. So that's the idea behind revision. And what these revisions would allow for is we want to partner with our parents. We never want parents to be in the dark or surprised about what it is that their child is learning, and we want to make sure that parents always know what's coming. From time to time, parents may have a concern about what it is in terms of instructional materials, something in the curriculum, a book, whatever it may be. And we want them to know what to do and how to navigate with that. So this policy not only sets that out more clearly, but it also allows us to develop administrative guidelines that would operationalize any of that. So, again, I've given the description before. Let's say there's a book that a child might be reading in the classroom, or the teacher's getting ready to read. Say it's Where the Red Fern Grows, and my child just had a death of a beloved pet, let's say, and they're like, you know, we don't want to do this right now, can we look at alternate material? The first step would be, go talk with your child's teacher, this happens all the time, and be able to come up with some alternative on that. That could happen at any grade level for any piece in the curriculum, and the teacher can work through that. Sometimes the teacher might even get that feedback from a parent and say, ooh, that makes me think about making a shift for what I'm doing for all students. So that, again, we encourage that partnership that is there. There may be a situation where a parent says, boy, I don't think this is appropriate for my child, we'd come up with an alternative, but I also maybe don't think this is appropriate at this grade level, or for other children as well. That could go to the principal, and the principal could be a next step in that process, to look at that, to see if things are appropriately placed. If there was a feeling that that wasn't resolved there, it could go to the district level and the instruction office, and that process, again, plays out there. Sometimes, and we've heard this previously, you know, I think of our AP Literature course, Advanced Placement Literature course for upperclassmen in high school. Sometimes there are book materials there that have been on the recommended reading list that deal with some heavier themes, some adult themes. Sometimes those materials will be in our media center, and some people have said, we don't think these materials are appropriate. What could happen in this case as well is, we could have a series of community members who would volunteer to go through and read these books, understand why it is that they might be here, and then make some recommendations that would come forward. That could come to our curriculum committee, and they could look at that as well if need be. But again, most of these issues do get resolved at the classroom level with the level of the parent working with the teacher on that. So that's the idea around this, and we want to make sure there's clarity there. And again, having an administrative guideline will also help to work through those details. I would just say, like we're revising the policy tonight, if we find something that doesn't quite work as we operationalize this, we can always come back and recommend tweaks from the board and the board policy, or if there's something in the administrative guideline that we need to adjust, we can do that so long as it doesn't go outside the bounds of the board policy.
One thing I noticed when we looked at the existing policy is, it was about this long.
Yes.
And what you just described to me is not a foreign concept of what we would have done all along, whether it was in this policy or not. If somebody had a question, you know, go to your teacher, the principal, and work through that. There was a lot of diligence put into this to put out consistency there of how things are handled so that there wouldn't be confusion. That was one of the things that I thought would be helpful for my parent. I know that Maggie, you spent a fair amount of time getting updates from Mr. Hayde, and then we heard about this in our committee meetings. Is there anything else you wanted to bring up to add on to what Dan shared?
I mean, just that, yeah, this has been, I think I'm safe to say, multi-months, many months process of putting this on paper. And sending it to Troon for approval. And we have gotten feedback and worked with a number of parents, and I say we, I mean the district and Mr. Hayde, gotten feedback from parents. And so this is definitely a collaborative document. And I also think, just to echo what you said, it's important to know that it's also a living document, and there is absolutely, you know, if we need to tweak something, if something is not working for our district, then there is room in there to move those around. It's not set in stone.
Right. And again, one of our guiding principles is collaboration. We want to partner with our parents. Our parents are our children's first teachers, and there's a variety of different pieces that may come up where parents may have a need to, again, partner more closely with the teacher in the classroom to say, hey, we may need an alternative for, and it could be a variety of different reasons that are there, and that process has surfaced well in the past. This just puts it out there in black and white as well.
Excellent. Thank you. And then the only other thing I did want to add is a huge thank you, just to make sure this gets in the minutes, to Mr. Hayde for navigating this, on behalf of a lot of other people that were involved, that he was able to spearhead this, and that's been really helpful.
Yep, a lot of work from our instruction team. Just one other item I wanted to call attention to in the consent grouping, and that is employment of new professional staff. This normally isn't a time of the year where we'd be bringing that forward, but we are so happy to fill a counseling position, and this is because of a little bit of a domino effect. Nicole Decrow was at Eastern Middle School. She moved to Eastern High School to really pilot a role. And again, Cindy Reynolds talked about this, about counselors going out and working with employers and finding out more and more what are those skills that our students need, and helping to bring that back and tell those stories to our students and families and teachers as well. So that's a pilot role Nicole is in. And then Christie Sherrington moved into the Coles position from Pine Ridge and Northern Trails, and this position tonight with Abby Sislack will fill that gap that Christie's move created. So that's in here tonight as well. That's all I wanted to highlight from the consent group.
Excellent. All right. And with that, I think we should move into our committee reports. And tonight, I believe Dr. Fosson is going to give us an update from a very entertaining finance committee meeting that we had, and followed by curriculum. So take it away.
They are always entertaining.
Yeah.
Yeah, finances are both fun all the time. So, yeah, so we had a really great meeting again this month, had discussion about looking at the financial statements for the month of February, and went over bond construction updates. We are in changing construction phases with the upcoming spring break at Collins, Orchard View, and Thornapple. Design work is continuing at Ada Vista and Pine Ridge. The construction and bidding documents are now being prepared for the Administration and Transition Center building. And we're made aware that with update, with all that's been going on with supply chains, that there may be some price increases in a lot of construction materials that might end up impacting our projects, and we're just going to have to kind of keep an eye on that and make sure that we're up to date on those. For our action items, we approve the meeting minutes from February. We're also recommending purchase of 3,747 Chromebooks. This is a replacement for ones that are at the end of their cycle. They have a typical life cycle, and the cost of replacing all of those is $1,450,000, and that will be funded with a combination of the 2021 capital projects and Acer II equalization funds. Also recommending purchase for 36 IMAX and their associated Final Cut software for use in the high schools' broadcasting and theater departments at a cost of $101,000, coming from also general fund and 2021 capital projects. We are in the final year of a three-year agreement with Microsoft and need to pay for that for $43,000. Also looking at purchasing replacement classroom furniture for classrooms in Collins, Orchard View, Thornapple, Eastern, and Northern High Schools, utilizing the purchasing cooperative that we have that gets us a much better deal. So, and the cost on that will not exceed $313,000, and that will also come from our 2021 capital funds. We also went over a budget amendment. This is the time of year when budget amendments come through, because the budget is set before we know where all of the dollars are coming from. So we had to do an amendment to reflect sort of where things are actually now. So our general fund revenue is increasing by $8.6 million due to a number of different things, including an increase in local revenue from Medicaid fee for service, sale of capital assets, and we also had a one-time refund on an insurance policy that switched from one fund to another. We also have increase in state revenue in areas like special education and retirement funding, Acer II formula and equalization funds that we're going to be spending this year, and some other grant changes. So that was an increase in fund revenue, $8.6 million. We also have an increase in expenses of $9.1 million, and that is due primarily to a few different things, like the board-approved off-schedule payments that were made to some employees back in December, tuition for virtual students, and operation and repair and maintenance and things like that that are not eligible to be used under bond funding. And so, the amendment projects to use $5.7 million of the fund balance that we currently have, which is up from the $5.1 million that was anticipated. And that's assuming that we use every dollar that is budgeted, and we never use every dollar that is budgeted. It's always about 2%. There's a 2% variance, so there will be a little bit of an update to that, but that's where we are on that. The last couple of things were that there's a school service fund revenue is increasing by about $1.6 million due to an increase in federal funding for both childcare and food service funds. And then the school service fund expenses increasing by 1.1 due to increases in wages, benefits, food costs, equipment, all those types of things. And then finally, there was a tax reimbursement to Kent County for $30,714, and to the city of Grand Rapids for $47,073.
Way to go!
A lot of, a lot of stuff going on this month.
All right. Any questions for Kristin? Okay. Well done. I think we should move into our curriculum report then. Maggie, you're up.
All right. We had a, we had a great meeting. We talked about a lot of things. First, we had John Hager from Central Middle School come, and he talked about their ACE program, which stands for All Classrooms Excel. And they do this middle school-wide, works to meet their goal of every student every day at Central Middle School, and to provide strategic intentional support to all of their kids. And so the way they do this is that they have assigned a different focus to each day of the week for students in their respective homerooms, if you will. So for example, Monday is called Executive Function Day, where students can work on things like cleaning out their lockers, cleaning up their Google Drive, which probably all of us could use some daily time to do, cleaning out folders, cleaning out backpacks, just kind of getting their lives a little organized. It's a great thing for Monday morning as they head into the week. On Tuesday, they spend time on IXL math. Wednesday, they have devoted to silent reading, so students reading a book of their choice. Thursday is spent doing some strategic IXL in the area of English Language Arts. And then Friday, they do House Culture Day. So this is a day where, you know, each of the classrooms are divided up into different houses, kind of like Harry Potter. And they do things like different games, competitions, team building, culture work, just those activities that make school a fun place to be and a really fun thing for a Friday going into the weekend. So that was a great presentation. And then we heard from Tamasha James, and she's just mentioned that she is going to be meeting with each student group from the Student Advisory Council from each high school individually. She's going to meet with the Central kids as a group, and then the Northern kids, and then the Eastern kids, just to kind of hear ideas from them on what they believe each unique school could benefit from. Those student advisory meetings are fantastic, but sometimes when we get all of those kids into one room, it's hard to kind of hear all the different ideas. So she's going to meet with each of those schools individually to kind of give them some more airtime. And then we had a presentation from Chris Happ on a number of different textbooks that the district is looking to have a 30-day review completed on for adoption for a number of classes. What I thought was great about her presentation was how much she emphasized the process for these books and the vetting process that takes place with her team of teachers that do this. You know, for example, teachers fill out rubrics for every single resource that they're looking to consider. They pilot a few lessons, they hear from the textbook rep about the materials to get a little bit more in-depth information. And I would, I think it's probably like a month-long investigation of this curriculum. This is not just like, let's meet one week, and then we'll bring it to curriculum committee. we'll bring it to Curriculum Committee the next week. So they are looking to adopt a textbook called Earth Science for Environmental Science, which is a new class next year. The teachers found it to be incredibly engaging for students. There were QR codes they could scan for demonstrations of concepts. They could take mobile field trips. There's a mobile app for them to use on their phone, and they are looking for a classroom set of those books, as well as digital access for all kids. Then there is an Essentials of Geology for Advanced Geology, which is offered at Central. They do not have a textbook currently for this class, and so they are looking to get approval to adopt this textbook. Again, QR codes for support and enrichment tutorials, and they are also asking for a classroom set and digital access. And then at Northern, where they offer college, where they offer AP Physics 1 and 2, they are looking to adopt College Physics. This, again, the teachers on the review committee said that this book was full of tutorials and interventions. There was a lot of prep for the AP exam and AP support practice for the test online. So they found that incredibly helpful. And then for AP Government, they are looking for a book called American Government Stories of a Nation. This one was actually written by an AP teacher, contains a lot of critical thinking assignments, a lot of AP exam practice questions, a Launchpad option online for adaptive quizzing to practice for the exam, and they are asking one-to-one textbooks for their students and also digital access. And then we also had a request to do a 30-day review of the book Chains by Lori Hals Anderson for a Read Aloud Historical Fiction Unit at Ada Elementary. And I think that was it.
Wonderful. I had the privilege to go to both meetings this week, so it was fun to participate in, in that. I haven't been to the Curriculum one for a little bit, so that was fun. Any questions for Maggie this time? All right, okay. So lots going on this week. I guess at this point, then we need a roll call vote to approve our consent grouping. Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fong?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Mrs. Koval? Yes. Mrs. Callahan?
Yes.
Excellent, all right. I think we are going to move on. Are there any other informational items you want to share or into your superintendent's report?
No, no informational items. I'll just go right into my superintendent's report then.
Perfect.
All right. Thanks to NAPFORC tonight for hosting us. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Kristen Chukow, Kristen moved from where she was, but I know she's here. There you are. Thank you. Thank you, Kristen, so much. And, you know, I'll just say a little bit about Kristen. Kristen, as some of our principals have had this distinction, hired during the pandemic, not only during the pandemic, but at a point where we were all sort of confined to our houses early on in the pandemic, and it's one of those things where early uses of Zoom for us, but it's been wonderful. So thank you for all your leadership here, Kristen. Thanks to Cindy and all of our teachers, Michelle, our instructional coach, our paraprofessionals, our front office team. It's great to have all of you with us here tonight, and thanks for all you do for kids each and every day. It's wonderful. I want to talk a little bit about learning beyond the classroom. We know that learning is not confined to the four walls of the classroom, and we are so grateful to have wonderful support and encouragement from our teachers, our community, our families, our parents, to have learning extend beyond the classroom. And we have a variety of field trips, and these are things that students look forward to all the time. One of the things that we're always trying to do with our field trips is to make sure we maximize participation and that we minimize any barriers that are out there. We've been looking at cost of field trips, and sometimes individual trips for individual students will range anywhere from no cost to a couple of dollars, all the way up to $1,600 for an individual student for one particular field trip. So we're looking at those things to say, how do we do more to help minimize those barriers? As I've been listening to parents and families reach out to me, sometimes they say, I realize there may be a scholarship there, but I'm not looking to check that particular box, but is there something you might be able to do to help minimize some of those costs? So we've been looking into that as well. One of the things that we've been looking at is the additional costs in overnight trips, and we will still continue to have overnight trips. There will be experiences that students have that go far away or beyond the state, or even a multi-day event even within the state, where we will have those overnight trips. We're looking to see how can we accomplish the learning beyond the classroom that aligns to our standards, and again, reduce and minimize those barriers. As we've talked to some parents, sometimes there are unique medical needs that happen maybe in the evening or at bedtime, and then we have to manage those, and we do, and we will. Sometimes there are religious practices and needs that sometimes can create some sort of barrier, and we're trying to work through those pieces as well. Sometimes for students, there's a group of, hey, five friends who want a room together, but we only have space for four students in a room. And so who's the odd person out, and how do we work through that and manage those pieces as well? So we are working on all of those pieces. I know as we talked about this in trying to maximize student participation and minimize barriers, I've had some students reach out to me with disappointment around what that means for a couple of our schools that go traditionally on an eighth grade trip to Mackinac. We haven't been able to do that the last couple of years, but we're excited to be able to do that this year. And we're still working through some of those pieces on that, and I'm meeting with students and look forward to that process. Again, trying to maximize participation for everyone, so we can get as many students as possible attending those trips and looking to minimize barriers. I'm so very grateful for our generous parents and community members that have said, hey, we will help out in any way we can to help students achieve these trips. So thanks again to all of our teachers and staff members that help to support learning beyond the classroom. It's a wonderful thing. And I look forward to more updates on this as we go forward. Another piece where we're looking to support students, we have students that have connections to Ukraine and Russia, and the conflict that is taking place there puts things in a different perspective for many of us, and looking to help support those students as they have extended family and loved ones that are involved in that horrific conflict, and again, looking to support them in any way that we can to keep, again, supporting their needs here and supporting their learning needs, as well as their social and emotional needs during this very, very difficult time. The last thing I wanted to update on and just take a little bit more time on this one is to provide a continuing update on where we are with our planning with federal relief dollars. You've heard this acronym, ESSER, Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund, I believe is the ESSER Fund, what that stands for. There was a first round that was very small for us. We spent those dollars really on personal protective equipment early on. There's been a second round of ESSER dollars as well, and that's gone into helping mitigate, and it was a smaller amount, some of the early learning needs that our students had. And then this third round, we've talked about this before, but there are two buckets of funds. There is a formula fund that is based on the federal formula, and that's about $2 million of one-time money that would be spent over the next two years, really through September 30th of 2024. And then there's a second fund that's larger for us, about eight and a half million dollars, and that's the Equalization Fund. The Equalization Fund, we've just received information from the state that allows us to begin the process of saying, here's how we would propose to use those funds. We have 90 days to get that plan into the state, and that clock just started ticking last week on that, for that 90-day clock. But I just wanted to provide an update of what our thinking is, and this is also the result of interactive discussions and dialogue with parents, with our teachers, with our non-teaching staff members, and with students as well, all coming together to say, here's what we see as needs in this area. We are looking to extend the time that learning can take place, kind of like how we saw wind time today. That's within the school day, but even to extend that time beyond the school day. So for after-school support for students that may benefit from additional time, and also time in the summer. There's some students that just want to focus on math and do that in the summer. Some students maybe at the high school level that want to focus on retaking a class or credit recovery in some area. Some students that, again, may need some specialized support, just say it's in the area of writing, let's say, to provide that customized summer programming as well. So that's extending that time that learning can take place. So if there are gaps that students have, we know that additional time can be supportive. And the other thing that can be supportive sometimes are additional people to help with the work. I talked earlier tonight about how important our paraprofessionals are to helping our teachers and they're integral partners with us. So one of the things that we've noticed is that students at our earliest grade levels, kindergarten and first grade, their impacts in the pandemic are rather unique because many of these students weren't able to go through a traditional preschool program. So some of those developmental milestones, they haven't reached or took a little bit more time to reach, so we see some delays there. By bringing in kindergarten and first grade paraprofessionals, they can help our kindergarten and first grade teachers help to meet these needs. So again, many hands making light work. And as I said earlier, when we recognize a gap, the sooner we close it, the more effective we can be with that intervention, and the more efficient it is from a cost standpoint as well. So we're looking to extend our kindergarten first grade, what we call SURGE AIDS, in this application that we're looking to put in, and that's also an extension from what we use some of our ESSER II dollars with as well. In the area of special education, again, there have been some unique gaps for some of our students with disabilities, and we want to make sure that we're addressing any of those gaps that may be there for students with disabilities with additional teacher support, pushing in support to the classroom, and pushing support into the general education classroom as well. A unique piece, very specific that we've heard about, is more and more support for students at the secondary level, middle school and high school, in the area of mathematics. So math is one of those programs that can take a scaffold sort of approach at times, and we want to, again, be able to provide additional support that we could push into a classroom, almost like what we saw wind time today. We don't really have that example at all of our secondary schools, how we might be able to do that, or again, additional focus support at additional times of the day for students at the secondary level in math. And then also, how do we take these dollars that are one-time, that will only be with us in these next two years, but how do we have a long-term impact with those funds? And our teachers talk about this all the time. They learn things from one another as colleagues. They learn things from other people that come in from other districts, and we call that professional learning and professional collaboration. And oftentimes, our teachers are really busy addressing the needs of the students right in front of them, and they need a little bit of time to understand how a colleague might approach something that could be a way that's, that's more effective, or just expands their toolbox, if you will. So that teacher professional learning, at times outside of school, and at times also what we call job-embedded professional learning, which is right there in the classroom, when students are presenting needs, and we can have someone come alongside and help anytime we're learning something new. It's great to have a coach alongside us. So that's another piece that we're looking at. Another discreet thing that we've heard is, again, for our earliest readers, we know that this makes a difference when we can address gaps right when they come up. Our kindergarten and first grade students, we need more decodable books, where students are really understanding those phonics pieces and other elements, and they're gaining confidence in their own reading. So to have more of those books, that will be very helpful and pay dividends as we go through their journey through high school as well. At the secondary level, we're looking at, again, providing support along these multi-tiered systems of support, and helping bring a coach to that at the secondary level. Again, by bringing these collaborative experiences to our teachers, it builds their own skill set and expands what is already a robust toolbox, but makes that even more so. And we sometimes refer to these as Tier Two support. So in the multi-tiered system, Tier One is what we would all receive in all students in instructional delivery or program that we have, and Tier Two might be some additional support that happens there, or even extension in some way. And it can happen both in the academic realm, and it can also happen in the behavioral realm. Sometimes, again, as we see kids at lower levels, they will sometimes communicate a need through a behavior, and that behavior may not always be conducive to learning or building community at the classroom level, but we still need to address that as well. And folks that can help with that in those Tier Two supports, that's another area that we're looking at these ESSER dollars. Again, we still have a system where we're putting all this together and sharing our thinking and plans, and also meeting, again, with the various stakeholder groups that we've met with, to be able to say, here's what we heard, here's what we see that's in common, here's what we think can best meet the needs of our students that are out there as well.
How will you present that to us? You said 90 days. Is that something we would see then in a Finance Committee meeting?
Yes, both, both that Finance Committee and the Curriculum Committee will come forward with our final application that we have on that. We have to send it into the Michigan Department of Education. Even though these are federal dollars, they're administered through, they're administered through the 50 states, so they will look at that and make sure that the things in our plan fit with all of the voluminous federal rules. And there are different sets of rules for the Equalization Fund and the Formula Fund. So we've got to make sure we're following through those as well.
Excellent.
That is my report tonight.
We had a lot of good stuff tonight. A lot, a lot of good stuff. Okay, any other, I guess, board communications at this point?
I have just a quick thing from the Foundation.
Yes.
So a week from today, there is the due date for the K6 Art Contest and 7th through 12th Grade Essay Contest, and that was in response to the prompt, What Does Community Mean to Me? And we talked at the last meeting that there's a number of different scholarships and prizes being awarded to kids, but the deadline for that is next Monday. So.
And the NAPFORC teachers that are here, be reminded right here.
Yeah, I'm sure they have it covered.
Yeah, they've got it covered.
Yes. So that's next Monday, and then they're going to award the winners of that contest at the State of the District Luncheon on May 5th at Watermark Country Club. So, and then also, something that's really exciting this week, the Foundation is visiting schools to award grants for teachers. I don't, I'm not going to say, like, where they've gone or what they're going to award. I don't want to ruin any surprises. This is only the first day that they went out to schools to deliver those, but we can probably talk more about those at the next meeting, some specific grants that were given out. But that's a fun week for them to get to go and visit and give that big check out to the teachers. And then, yeah, just State of the District Luncheon, it's May 5th, 11:45 at Watermark Country Club. And they're still looking for table hosts for that, so if anyone is interested in hosting a table, or just even attending, they can call the Foundation office, and you can find that phone number on f-h-p-s-f.org. They're going to have teachers and students there from all three attendance areas, highlighting some special learning opportunities, and just kind of talking about all the different possibilities that exist for kids in our district. That's it.
Excellent. Any other board communications, Kristen? Mary?
Quickly.
Yes.
No, the Student Advisory Council has valued your attendance at their meetings. They have one left. It's April 22nd. I know not everybody has been able to attend, but if you're interested, let me know. We want to make sure there's not more than three of us there. But they like, when you're there, they'd like to meet you. Maggie reminded me, they did something very cool. They surveyed their membership at the first meeting, and a very unanimous, universal topic was inclusion. How do we take care of each other better? So Tamasha's been involved in planning a special meeting that's next week. And so if you're interested in that, let me know as well. And I know she's going to take time to kind of break out into small groups and talk to the kids about how we can all move forward better together. So if interested, let me know.
Excellent. All right, great updates from everybody. Okay, so at this time, we are going to open it up for public comments, and I believe that probably at the back or up on the podium or in a variety of places, there are, oh, this is a copy of the public participation. If anybody wants to make public comments, I, we will invite them to come up to the microphone here. And this is the, for anybody that's new, I'll run through a couple of things, but we would like you to state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Again, there's all sorts of details in here, but I thought maybe I would just start out with one of my favorite coaches. It's not Chris Thomas, it's one of my other favorite coaches, Ted Lasso. And one of his quotes is, "We should always be curious and not judgmental." So I love, I'm so curious. I love to hear what everybody says from the teachers, from all of you here. So when everybody comes up, can we just be curious and not judgmental, and listen to what everybody says, and it'll be a really good night? So with that, please, if anyone would like to share public comments, go for it. So with that, please, if anyone would like to share public comments, go for it.
Thank you very much. It's hard to follow up on a Ted Lasso quote. That's pretty, yeah. May as well just close it down. My name's Jennifer Poplava, and I live at 2180 Spalding. I'm a Forest Hills parent, a Cascade Township resident, and a Grand Rapids business owner. And I volunteer locally for both charitable organizations and the local government. And I'm offering this information to you because I've noticed that we've had several speakers at the last several meetings who don't seem to share these connections with our community. And I decided that I needed to come forward and speak in public tonight at this meeting because the lack of civil discourse in our community troubles me greatly. And I'm also troubled by the blurring of lines between politics and education. Nationwide, there have been calls for civility at board meetings as our board members, teachers, and administrators should be able to serve their communities without threats of harassment and violence. There's no place here for disrespect or public shaming. There's no place here for disinformation or misinformation. There's no place here for threats of intimidation or harm, vague or otherwise. This is a place to conduct school business, as we've all witnessed here tonight before these public comments began. I'm glad that the board has called attention to the public participation policy, and I ask that this board enforce that policy against those who refuse to come into compliance with the rules and remove people who persistently engage in disorderly conduct and breach the peace. Like many parents in our schools, I'm a fan of our schools, I also recognize that there are always going to be ways to improve. For the record, I'm a supporter of the diversity and inclusion initiatives such as GLI, and I believe that this kind of learning is essential both to teach empathy and to prepare our children for the future. I further do not believe that books should be pulled from school libraries because a few parents are afraid or disagree with the topics those books may cover. As was described earlier, there are processes to address particular concerns that a parent may have about a book. My comments shouldn't be of surprise to the board because I've communicated them privately to the board from time to time, but I want to reiterate in this public forum that sometimes the loudest and most strident voices do not necessarily represent a majority view of parents or of residents. People certainly have the right to express their opinion. However, any suggestion that the review is shared by many without the data or the votes to back it up is spurious at best. Please look with a critical eye, by efforts, by the fringe view, to bring in community to bring in people outside of this community to boost rhetoric unsupported by your community stakeholders. It's my hope that we'll all return soon to civility so that this board and our schools can get back to the business of providing a superior public education for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Doug Lee, and I live at 8613 52nd Street, Nato. I think your presentation today regarding showcasing SEL, it all sounds good, it's got great words. It's easy to foul, okay? Because it sounds good. But it's very dividing. I have three minutes, I can't even begin to tell you what's wrong. I can only show you the proof. One example is the community right here. You have divided the community. There are parents that are quite smart, that knows exactly what their kids are doing, but you don't listen to them. You should listen and take a deep dive of what the SEL programs and what the deeper issues are when you teach it. Let me give you another example, diversity and inclusion. Tamasha James, when she became principal at Pine Ridge, there was a sacred thing in Pine Ridge called a "Me and My Dad Breakfast." I went to them 13 times. I got some of the wonderful pictures. And I took other kids with me from other families who didn't have dads, as with many other parents. Just because you didn't have a dad did not exclude you from being at the "Me and My Dad Breakfast" because the community stuck together. She changed it and added diversity and inclusion and killed the event, a historical event. That's what your programs do. As example, just for this room is filled. I suggest that you take a deeper dive into SEL, bring in consultants to give opposing views of what you're doing. What you're trying to do sounds good. That's why you got it, because it sounds good. It's got good words. Who's against diversity? Who's against inclusion? Take a deeper dive, learn about it. Us parents, we do have done that, but you don't listen to us. You control, you have one employee that you control, you have total dedication to school. I remember a time in this district from a previous superintendent and a previous board, they had a philosophy, academics over athletics. We had the worst football team in the state of Michigan, and yet you had to go there two days before and put your blankets on the bleachers to even get a seat. That board at that time was fought against the athletic boosters who wanted athletics. They wanted the teachers who teach athletics. But the board came together with the superintendent and had a substantial outcome for the best for our kids. That's all we're asking, for the best for our kids. I know you have good intentions because it sounds good. It's easy. There's a lot more to it, and we have a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge to share if you just listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Monica Stegaman, and I live at 1356 Kirk Drive in the Forest Hills School District. I have one child that has graduated from this district and one that is still in high school. I'm addressing you today as a concerned parent about the state and perception of public schools and the role of public education. First, I want to say that we moved into this district 17 years ago because of the quality of schools and the diversity within the northern school system. We've always been pleased with the level of teacher compassion and expertise in educating our kids. I've become dismayed recently by the level of criticism, religious overreach, and divisiveness that has come from adults internally and outside of our school system. Public education is for all. That means every family is given a free education, no matter what your family looks like, your economic status, values, or experiences. We chose a public educational experience for our children because we want them to see a cross-section of their community at large and to understand that all people have value, no matter their background. One of public education's goals is to teach kids how to think critically, to find, analyze, and discuss information, and not to just memorize numbers, formulas, quotations, and dates. It is to teach them how to observe the world around them and to come up with solutions to help themselves and their communities as adults. This is the kind of education that our kids are receiving right here in the Forest Hills District. I'm not saying that subjective family instruction and personal family styles are not important, but they are to be taught at home and not used as instruction for all students or used as a tool against some students. Please accept our families' approval and praise of Forest Hills Public Schools and teachers and continue to provide well-rounded education for all kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Vince Manahar, 4031 Merrickville, Bushworts Drive. I have this book here, Looking for Alaska by John Green. As you can see from the sticker, it was checked out of Forest Hills Central High School. Call number is F-G-R-E barcode 23418-00011-7710. There are alternate copies available at Eastern Middle and High School, two copies at Northern High School, and two copies at Central Middle School. Since Central Middle teaches 7th and 8th grade students, there are kids as young as 12 who have access to this book. By page seven of this book, the main character Miles is established as being 16 years old. This is set in Florida and Alabama where people are legally minors until age 18, therefore this character is a minor. The passage I will be reading is on page 126 and 131. Merriam-Webster defines pornography as a noun, the depiction of erotic behavior, as in pictures or writing intended to cause sexual excitement. By this definition, the school libraries have made a book with pornography about minors available to minors as young as age 12 years old. While I disagree with book bans, this book belongs any public library classified with an explicit warning of nudity and adult situations, just as you would see on movies and on television shows. It does not belong hidden for easy checkout in a school library. It's mislabeled in the wrong kind of library and should be out of the school library system. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sandy, I'm from Ada Township. I cannot figure out what possible harm there could be if any high school student or middle school student did not have access to this kind of a book. I can't imagine, would you have these books in your home on your coffee table so that any guest that walks into your home could sit down and page through them and read them? Your minister, your priest? I, we had two sons that graduated from Forest Hills. I think in my son's freshman year, his teacher read aloud books during the last 15 or 20 minutes of the class. They were good books. Would you recommend a Forest Hills teacher read this out loud to their students? I just, you're not, if you take these books off the shelf, you're not banning books. Kids, if they want to read this stuff, they're going to find it, but you don't have to be the supplier. Forest Hills does not have to be the supplier. Just set a higher standard. That's all I have to say.
I'd like to follow my sister, who just spoke the truth. I can be so appalled at what's going on in these schools, and I can't believe parents will stick up for this. But my hope is not in changing the school board, my hope is in Jesus Christ, who with the Holy Spirit can change your hearts and minds to seek and want truth and to reign in our schools and our nation. With that said, I now say a prayer. Father in heaven, I stand before you and these people assembled here to humbly ask your forgiveness for our national sins. We have forgotten you, turned our back on, and abandoned your holy word. We have set ourselves up as supreme authority in last word over right and wrong. We have made a mockery of your creation, twisting scripture to fit our definition of right and wrong. Who are we, Lord, to condemn a generation of children by exposing them to perverse materials, untruthful versions of our history, endorsing and applauding the idea that we can change the identity you assign to each child at birth? You are a holy God, you don't make mistakes. Pushing aside your commandments, we have pronounced that which is evil to be good as long as it feels right, and that which is good to be evil, causing pain and confusion. You are not wanting for us to choose the way of suffering that leads to eternal death, but the way that leads to life and liberty, truth and righteousness found only in you. The only way to stop this evil, having spread its tentacles into our schools, is to pray for a revival of your people to wake up from the sleep that has allowed this to happen and call on you through your son, Jesus Christ, who have mercy on us and through sincere repentance on our part, crush these attacks on our children and our entire country. We are in a spiritual battle, not with flesh and blood, but against Satan, the prince of this world, who by using those who are willing can continue to advance this hell on earth. Father, recognizing where we are, we ask your help to revive us again. At the name of Jesus, every knee will bow, every tongue confess him, Lord. In his name I pray, amen. And I'd like to say that the, some of the sponsors of this SEL program, that you're supporting, the Southern Poverty Law Center, National Equity Project, World Economic Forum, Planned Parenthood, and the National Education Association. These are not good groups. Thank you.
My name is Diane. My address is 10960 Hooligan. I just want to bring to your attention that there are laws against obscene material. I want to read these laws to you, the Michigan Code Law 722675, disseminating sexually explicit matter to minor, felony and penalty. Do you realize that transporting, displaying, and encouraging young children to read offensive, inappropriate material is against the law? The material that is now in the school district and in these libraries is dangerous and should not be shown to any child under the age of 18. Promotion of material with sexual content is sexual harassment of the children. Michigan Code Law 752365, obscenity elements, misdemeanor, penalty, second or subsequent offense as felony. Section 5.1, a person is guilty of obscenity when knowing the content and character of the material the person disseminates or possesses with intent to disseminate any obscene material. Obscene material means material taken as a whole, which to the average person, applying contemporary statewide standards, appeals to the purient interest and is material which taken as a whole depicts or describes sexual conduct and which taken as a whole lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. These materials are allowing opportunity to groom children for sexual encounters, therefore is a form of sexual abuse. Michigan Code Law 750145, child sexually abusive material means any depiction, whether made or produced by electronic, mechanical, or other means, including a developed or undeveloped photograph, picture, film, slide, video, electronic visual image, computer discut, computer or computer-generated image or picture, sound recording which is of a child or appears to include a child engaging in a listed sexual act, a book, magazine, computer, computer storage device, or any reproduction, copy, print of such a photograph, picture, film, slide, video, electronic visual image, book, magazine, computer, or computer-generated image or picture, other visual or print or printable medium or sound recording. This is actually the law, and that is why some of it's repetitive. Some of the material you and the school board have decided to purchase and allow in the libraries and introduce into the public school system is sexually explicit. libraries and introduce into the public school system is sexually explicit and visual in nature. This type of literature is being pushed upon our children, along with CRT, DEI, and transgender gender confusion materials. You are responsible and liable for the influences you have on the minds of the children. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Bernhardt. I'm at four seven three zero Old Grand River Trail Northeast in Ada. My kids are in the Eastern School District. I had no intention of speaking this evening until I just had to have my daughter leave the auditorium as oral sex was being discussed. But they were here to stick up for themselves and their desire to go along with their tradition of their Mackinac trip. So I am going to stand up and speak for them since I had them leave the auditorium. We moved here almost six years ago now, and we chose this district because it felt like home. It felt like there was just this energy around education that couldn't be beat anywhere we had lived, and we've lived in multiple places and our kids attended multiple elementary schools. And I'm telling you, things are changing. Never in a million years, five and a half years ago, would I tell you we were thinking about pulling our kids and going private, but we are now because of things, just little things that continue to add up, like pulling their overnight Mackinac trip. I hear us talking out of both sides of our mouth. I hear SEL talking about teaching our kids social and emotional intelligence, and then I hear us talking about pulling an overnight trip because maybe there might be five kids that want to stay in a room, but only four can fit because we have to consider everything else when it comes to religious intelligence, medical intelligence. We know all those things, but that's how we teach our kids to grow up. That's how we teach our kids to become adults. Think back on your elementary, middle school, and high school experiences. What are some of the most memorable experiences that you had? When I was in eighth grade, I spent a week in DC away from my parents. I was a small-town country girl, and guess what? We survived. We learned how to socially interact. We, I mean, we had a much different economic, financial status. We worked for a year to be able to go on those trips. As parents, we are here telling you, if there's financial concerns, we can cover the financial concerns. But don't hold these kids back from going on a trip because you don't think they're ready to learn to handle that social and emotional intelligence that we just heard about for fifteen minutes that we're teaching our kids. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Penny Weninger. I live in Quail Crest, and I have been living in Cascade Township for seventeen years. It was after my children were out of school, so I am not a school parent. However, I have only become aware of some of the issues that have been raised tonight, and passions have been running high and many allegations have surfaced, so I did what I always do. I did my own research. I've read policies. I've spoken to the chief of curriculum, Scott Hayde. I've spoken to teachers, parents, and other non-parent community members. I have read the fine print of both petitions called Let My Kids Learn. I looked at the financial implications, and I looked for educational oversight material, but that's not addressed. And I listened to as much of the recording of last month's board meeting as was available before it completely froze, as did I, after what I heard. Honestly, I cannot figure out what all the screaming is about. There is no such thing as CRT in public education. There are no litter boxes in the halls. Face it, if kids want porn, they don't have to go to books in the library. All they have to do is take out their phones. Parents who disagree with public policies that benefit ninety percent of America's kids always have the choice of home or private schooling. They can instill religious and spiritual values in their kids at home. They do not, however, have the choice to pillage Michigan public education. In my sixty-nine years on this earth, I have been a proud product and proponent of public education, from kindergarten through college. I have worked at two community colleges and a state college, and I still am a proponent of public education. And I'm here to tell you that the majority of citizens in Forest Hills and Michigan will not be bullied by a very loud but small minority of voters who think they can censor books or curriculum or privatize our public education. I have confidence that the majority of us will still continue to support you, our public educators, and that the majority of Michiganders will decline to sign. Thank you very much, and thanks for all you do.
Hi. My name is Sarah Galloway, and I wasn't planned speaking tonight, but I spoke last week, or last month, and I read one of the books that were explicit. And everything that I spoke took about a month to be able to come out on our meetings, and they were all canceled out, like I was muted. So everything I read was muted, the words I spoke were bleeped out because it was considered explicit, you know, like you would see on TV. So my question to you is, if you felt convicted to silence my words and bleep out the words that I read from the books that you have in the school library, doesn't that give you a clue that it probably shouldn't be in the school library? So that's just deductive reason. And to the point of the woman who just spoke, when she talks about this small minority of people, I have my kids in public school. They've been here for years. So the fact that there's this conception that people are trying to get kids out of the public school so that they can get it paid for is just misinformation. I'm going to use that word because that's used a lot these days. And I personally am here because I'm just trying to fight for the integrity of our education system that you guys are all in charge of, is making sure our kids are safe. I don't personally feel like school is really a safe place anymore. And we talk about all this inclusiveness and diversity and, you know, making everybody's values count. Well, my values don't feel respected. And then people, I mean, I've actually heard people say on social media, boy, we got to get these Christians out of here. You know, to me, that sounds like not inclusive. That seems that you kind of want to push us away, that our values don't matter. So what I think in school, school should be a place of neutrality. They should not be a place where one ideology overstates another. They should be a place of, a safe place, where they're not going to be, you know, told or encouraged to be a different gender from the one that they were born. Or, boy, how do you feel today? Can you tell me, you know, if you're feeling really down today? It's a nice thing to do, but it's not the school's job. If you see something, you can go talk to them and address it. I don't need the school to tell me, you know, really to sex educate my kids. That's my job as a parent. I don't want the school to be pushing all of these other things but academics. Academics seem to be secondary to all these social plans, and I don't understand that. So I would just encourage people to go and look into the libraries, look at the books, and you can see for yourself, because it's not a lie, like some people are saying. This is actually a very local thing, and it's really real. So stop telling us it's not. Thank you.
My name is Carol, and I'm from Plainfield Township, and I'd like to start by opening a prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and ask for your wisdom, guidance, and discernment. We ask that you would soften the hearts of everyone here tonight to hear what is true and to desire to do the right thing. Thank you, Lord, for your forgiveness that comes only through your son, Jesus. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. Matthew eighteen six says, "If anyone causes one of these little ones, those who believe in me, to stumble, it would be better for them to have a large millstone hung around their neck and to be drowned in the depths of the sea." So I'm asking you, are you causing little ones to stumble here in this school? By distorting, misleading, or twisting the truth, think about someone you love, possibly your child or a grandchild, sitting at home, reading a book from the school library, and lo and behold, they stumble upon Looking for Alaska, a book found here at this school. Can you imagine how a child you love would feel reading this? Would he feel uneasy or uncomfortable? Would he feel compelled to search for porn online? Is that what you want for someone you love? This is from another book here, Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl. It continues. In just these three paragraphs out of a full seven pages, children have been taught about oral sex, masturbation, and the fact that they can watch porn, just like the boy in this story. Is that your goal for your children or grandchildren, to pique their interest about porn? Get them started early in life so they can get hooked? That's what this stuff is doing. I would hope you know that. Galatians six seven says, "Do not be deceived; God cannot be mocked. A man reaps what he sows. Whoever sows to please their own flesh, from the flesh they will reap destruction, not eternal life, but destruction." This stuff is evil. These books are purposefully getting kids hooked on pornography instead of giving them a quality education. This stuff does not need to be here. Thank you.
People seem to be pretty excited about this, so maybe we better slow it down for some of these parents so they can understand. So once again, if you want the book, folks, it's Looking for Alaska by John Green in your students' library for your twelve-year-olds to have a look at whenever they feel like it. You just heard some of the passages, and it absolutely amazes me that I have to sit here and look at some of these parents sign off on this evil nonsense that is going on in this room. I get the evils here because I've seen it numerous, numerous times. I sit here and watch it go on, and it's not going to stop. It just keeps going. But to have to sit here and watch the parents agree with the evil and get on board with this evil is absolutely amazing to me. I cannot stand it with your little billboards and your little signs, and we support the evil. You guys support this nonsense? You support that a twelve-year-old should read about putting his penis in some girl? And then what's even sicker is we've got three cops in the room. We've got three cops that are going to sit here and watch this evil go on and listen to all these criminal charges, because that's what it is. It's evil and it's criminal. And we have three cops that are going to sit here and watch this and protect you guys instead of doing what they should do, which is honor their oath and take all your butts to jail. That's what they should do. They should throw you all in handcuffs, and they should haul you all out of here. You have no business being around any children. You have no business talking about having overnights for children. This is what you want to do with children overnights? Is this it right here, right? For all these people's children? This is what you're going to do on overnights, right? This is what it's all about. It's all about Looking for Alaska and John Green and overnights with these people's children, right? But you got five supporters out here, so I guess the evils are right. It's okay to do this, right? It's okay to continue to do this, month after month after month, after you've been put on notice, after you've been served with the ladder of intent, after all the charges have been listed off, after your attorneys have tried to scare people. But guess what? Nobody's scared of you. Nobody is scared of the evil. So have as many cops show up as you want to this room. When we show up and there's three cops, nobody's scared of you. Nobody's scared of your evil. And if they were doing their job, they'd haul you out of here. You should be cuffed and hauled out of here because you are sick. You are demented. Yeah, I'm looking at you. Right at you. You are evil. There is something wrong with you. So smile and smirk and pretend like it's okay. Pretend like it's all right that this is going on, because it's not. And besides your five supporters that you paid, and then all your puppet teachers that left because they don't want to have to hear about the truth, they're gone. They left. You're evil.
Good evening. My name is Lori Rowan. I've lived in the district for over forty years.
And I live in Meadowbrook Attendants area. First and foremost, I hope everybody had a nice day. I do want to take a moment to thank Mr. Bean and the board for keeping staff and students as safe as possible as you have navigated, as well as we have navigated, our way through a pandemic. I also wish to express how incredibly sad I am for all the verbal attacks that you have had to endure. Your integrity and focus to ensure our students have a positive learning environment, to me, is a testament of your dedication to the one thing that I hold true to my heart, which is public education. To the staff of Forest Hills Public Schools, to our administrators, pardon me, secretaries, bus drivers, custodians, food service, student services, and teachers, thank you for making meaningful impacts every single day in the lives of our children. You gave my children a solid foundation in their time at Forest Hills, and now I have grandchildren that attend, and I am in awe in the ways that their teachers and staff continue to dedicate themselves, first and foremost, to their academic ability. But we all know that if we don't meet their emotional and social developmental needs, the academics won't come. So in closing, I just want you to know that I thank you for doing your best each and every day, and I trusted you with my children, and I trust you with now my even more important role as a grandparent, and I trust you with my grandchildren. Thank you.
Well, that provided some contrast.
Could you say your name, please?
Yeah, my name is Scott Tijon, sorry. I live in Fifty Auburn, and I have nieces and nephews that attend Forest Hills Public Schools. So, man, are we divided or are we divided? One of the things that I want to reiterate, I heard a woman come up here and say that all people have value, right? That comes straight from the Bible. That was good. I don't know if she believed in the Bible or not, but she said something that was very profound. All people do have value. On that note, we see a lot of passionate people coming up here and advocating for their children, right? One of the things that we've heard are some explicit comments in books that were available in your comments in books that were available in your libraries. Some of us think those books are okay, others don't. There was a time when the Michigan law was written. People didn't really like those things being available. And according to law, they still shouldn't be available to their children. There's a reason why kids are not adults until they're 18, right? Many parents don't want their kids exposed to the types of things that you heard read in those books. We're here to advocate for those kids, okay? And there's some divide out there. Some people may think that that's okay, but we don't. And we don't want that ideology imposed on our children, okay? I do believe that all people have value, right? And I do believe in personal family values, whether you're a religious person or not. I tend to be Christian, right? So my values are Christian. That means I do care about all people, okay? But I see a big problem in your libraries. I see one ideology winning over another. I see kids being exposed to things that their parents don't want to. You know what? Some of us don't let our kids have cell phones until a certain age. On those cell phones, they do have access to porn, right? But some of us don't want them to have access to porn, so we don't do that. And we have parental controls that we exercise when we do get our kids' cell phones. We certainly don't want them exposed to pornography through a book that they found in a school library. Please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. My name's Jarrett Jacobowski. My wife and I have lived in the district for over 30 years. And props to the people who gave the SEL introduction. It was oh-so-charming. It was really cute. It was adorable. And I want to give props to the three board members who went to the Jennifer McWilliams seminar last month on the dark side of SEL, social-emotional learning. And there is a dark side. And so it gave me hope that you guys were finally hearing, listening to our concerns. And it was really good to know that you were finally willing to communicate. And that you did. You spoke loud and clear when you all abruptly stormed out of the SEL meeting. Your refusal to refute, to even ask questions, to dialogue in any way in search of the truth spoke volumes. A couple thousand years ago, a very wise man said, "Forgive them, Father; they know not what they do." Well, at some point, forgiveness must become judgment, followed by consequences. Where is that point? Well, that boiling point of judgment is reached when people choose not to know and choose to deny the truth. And the truth is, your well-intentioned, progressive, woke policies have diverted precious resources and time and thereby impaired true academic learning, despite any skewed, dumbed-down scholastic metrics. Plus, you have caused painful collateral damage, confused division, and racist resentment between students, neighbors, and families. Talk about a bitter irony. And by the way, all this has been personally fact-checked. So, consequences are coming. Will they be just in the form of pangs of conscience when you look at the man, the woman, or the non-gender-specific person in the mirror? Or when you are decisively recalled? Or when you're even more decisively voted out in the next election? Or perhaps when you're held legally liable jointly and severally for conspiring, for example, to violate laws regarding open meetings? Or perhaps all of the above? We shall see what we shall see to be continued. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Liz Post. Live at 7385 Cascade Terrace. Just want to speak for a little bit. I want to address the issue of lack of busing transportation. I have four children. I have a seventh grader at Central Middle School. Her bus was canceled last week, and she had no way of getting home. I had to go pick up my other two children, who were, they go attend to a different school. I have to pick them up. And my other son also, his bus was also canceled, so I had to try and find transportation for him. Thankfully, my husband was able to go out and get transportation for him. So that leaves my seventh-grade daughter at Central Middle School stuck at school without a ride home. How is she going to get home? The only thing I could possibly come up with after maybe calling in a few favors to a couple people that she felt comfortable carpooling home with, those rides were unavailable to her. So she was stuck walking from Central Middle School down Ada Drive to her dad's work, where she was going to stay until he went out to Goodwillly, dropped my son off at home, then came all the way back to work to get her from school, from his work, because there was no busing for her to get from school until home. She is one of the very few seventh graders without a cellphone. She was petrified, walking all the way from Central Middle School to her father's work with no phone, nobody to walk with as a seventh grader. 28 weeks, 128 days, that's 443 bus route cancellations. Dan, so we continue to ask you, Dan, where is the bus? Please work to provide. Our children need access to transportation to and from school. It's a hindrance to single parents who are trying to provide for their families. They have to leave work early, constantly sending out text messages, trying to get the logistics of after-school pickup before school drop-off, trying to get these kids to school. I sent out an email recently. I think I got a reply from, I think it was Julie Davis. Let me just correct this if I'm wrong here. Julie Davis, the Assistant Superintendent for Finances and Operations. Last week, we were emailing back and forth. She states that there's four drivers out last week on leave of absence due to being sick or illness. Since November of last year, the district is only in the process of hiring two additional bus drivers. We love our Transportation Department. This is not on them. It's a result of poor leadership at the top. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Scott Van Solkema. I live in the district. That is how much this board has authorized in spending since August of 2021. or 62.9% has been by issuing $3,487 checks from the General Fund and ACH direct deposits, which is on the left side of your bills ledger. or 37.1% is for payroll and flex spending. I have been asking about the way that this board approves spending our taxpayer money since August 2021 meetings in the bus garage, since there is literally no detail in regards to what these millions of dollars are being spent on. Recently, I asked Dan Beam at the February curriculum meeting about more transparency. This was his answer at that meeting. Superintendent Beam shared that 85% to 86% of the budget is related to salary, benefits, and required employment-related taxes. The other 14% to 15% of the budget is highly regulated as to how it is put together in a chart of accounts. This is state-regulated, and other government entities are not subject to the same standards of reporting. Since I just told you that these numbers, which are vastly different from what Superintendent Beam relayed to me in that meeting, I asked him and Assistant Superintendent Julie Davis, which law specifically are they following? Which limits what financials they can share? Julie Davis responded that the law that allows individuals to request additional information beyond what is already available on our website is the Freedom of Information Act. Once a year, FHPS puts out their check registry. Last fiscal year's registry is 215 pages long with 51 items per page for a total of approximately $10,965 bills that were approved by this board. If I wanted to go back and look at the prior year's registries, it's gone. It's off the website, as it shares the same wedge page address. Why is that? Again, there's no transparency. Board member Fausten, you actually campaigned on this lack of transparency. Quote, "I believe I can help achieve greater transparency between the school board, superintendent, and the greater Forest Hills community. At a basic level, the agenda and meeting minutes distributed before and following board meetings are so minimal that they provide little useful information. I would improve these so that the community is informed of what specifically is on the agenda and actively encourage parents, teachers, and community members to provide their opinions with enough time for the board to consider them." Well, how's that going in regards to greater transparency? Because I have not seen any changes. And you can see here, community members have not seen any either. Since the board authorizes the payment of the prior month's bills, it should be easy enough for you to demand your employees, the FHPS admin, to include the specific check information in your public board packet. Local municipalities can do it. The schools should be able to do it, too. And finally, we should stop calling this a public school. It is not open to the public. You certainly are not accountable to the public. Our schools are run by the government. They are regulated by the government. And they are funded by government tax dollars. They are compelled by government. Our schools are government schools.
Thanks, Scott.
Good evening. I wasn't going to say anything. I was just going to then come up and say...
Do you mind sharing your name first?
Yep, sorry. Patty Tally, 6740 Twin Springs. But I actually teach at Central Woodlands. Taught all day, had conferences, and then came to a board meeting. So we're not, you know, all not here. First, I just wanted to say thank you for everything you do, for supporting us. As you can tell, this is a hard time to be in your job, and it's a hard time to be in our job. Then I wanted to say I'm sorry that your meeting has to go this way. I've been to several board meetings. I started listening last year when they were online, and I just can't believe the way people act. Third, I just wanted to say, on April 22nd in the morning, I want to invite you to my classroom. I'm having a STEM morning for my kids, and I just would like you to come and check out what we're doing. That's it. And hopefully, we can end this now.
Thank you.
Hi, Mandy White. So I guess I'm a little confused because she just said that...
Could you state your name, please?
Mandy White.
Mandy White.
She just said that the meetings were online. And last month, I asked for more transparency and asked for... I'm sorry?
Zoom meetings.
Right. Any meeting. Last month, I asked for all the meetings. Finance committee, board meetings, to be either streamlined or recorded. And I even emailed you guys, and only three of you responded to me and said that Kyle, who's our communications director, isn't here to record meetings. That's not his job. I understand he's got other tasks, and he's got other responsibilities. But one of them, Mary, you had said in previous meetings that you hired somebody so that we could record meetings. So now you're saying that's not true? I'm just trying to understand. We can't be at these meetings during the workday. You have 8:00 AM, you have 3:00 PMs. We just want to be able to view them. The excuse of there's not enough viewers to go back and view it? It shouldn't matter if one person or 100 people view it. That is something that should be available to us in the district. I don't understand why. We just had Zoom. We just found out that we had Zoom last year. We have nothing this year. Why? I don't understand. Did any of you on the board or in the administration department recognize our Transportation Department last month? When it was national bus drivers? I don't believe any of you did. The community. The community came together and brought them breakfast, coffee, bought them gift cards, an appreciation from us, because they aren't getting any. We have a problem with getting bus drivers. We don't see anything being done. We don't see anybody doing what they need to do to get more drivers in. Have you even contacted or worked with the community to find out what ideas that they may have to help bring people in? Why are we having to be the ones to show support and stand behind these drivers when it should be you? Dan, you said you were going to get your CDO. Where's that? You should be out driving. If we have a shortage, why aren't you out driving? I don't understand. I really don't. I mean, this is a problem. You want kids in the school. How are they supposed to get to school? We are depending on transportation. If there is none, there goes your staff. There goes all your reasons to be in the position that you're in. Our drivers and the people in the Transportation Department are getting nasty calls all the time. They're fielding the problem. They shouldn't have to deal with that. That should be taken care of by you guys. When is it going to be fixed?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Boone. I live at 2205 Noel Point Drive. At the curriculum meeting last week, Dan brought up student behavior concerns. And he said that last school year, FHPS saw a record-low number of behavior issues with students. But that this school year, we are seeing a relatively high number of behavior concerns, specifically related to defiant behaviors. I'm wondering if we, as a district and a community, can figure this out, put some thought into it, and why that might be. Managing student behavior has always been a huge part of life at school, and we all want our children to be heard and validated and to feel safe and stable while at home and at school, right? So what has changed? Well, thanks to the COVID lockdowns, our children got a good, long taste of what it was like to be lazy when it comes to school expectations. Attending school in their jammies, showing up to school for class, you know, for 10 minutes, and then, oh, I'm going to bounce for the day. No accountability, sleeping in, eat what they want, when they want, take tests if they feel like it, while their parents were out working to put food on the table during a really rough time. So this school year, things have been pretty much back to normal as far as the daily routine and expectations. And the kids weren't ready for that. And guess what? The government, they knew that, and they planned for it. And here comes the S.R. rescue dollars. We now have a fancy way to categorize and label screwed-up kids with behavior concerns, all under the guise of academic learning loss and fancy acronyms and whatever you want to call it. We're surveying our kids and labeling them of mental health disorders, pushing for Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions, incorporating SEL throughout the curriculum, all in an attempt to fix our children. The problem is, money does not fix all problems. Kids experiment with defiance when they see or hear their peers or siblings getting away with a certain behavior, which gives them the green light to do it as well. And it's contagious. Nothing has changed about that. They're testing and learning their limits, what their limits are with adults in the room. And when there are no limits and anything goes, which is what our schools are doing anymore, they will do almost anything. Especially when their own teachers, some of them are modeling this horrible behavior out in public. I currently have a few Forest Hills teachers that have been stalking and harassing me. And it's not okay. I mean, if we all just read the signs on the walls that are posted everywhere, we don't need to say SEL post of the week. Look, integrity. If you have to think about whether something is right or wrong, it's wrong. I mean, just read the signs. It's all there. I'm just asking, please, please, don't apply for the S.R. 3 funding. Please don't do that. We can fly solo, and we can do this together. If you trust the parents and we can trust you, we don't need the government, that money. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Becky Olson, and I'm in Cascade, and I have to ask for forgiveness in advance because I was not planning to say anything, so my thoughts are a bit fragmented. But I first wanted to take a moment to read off some of the names of books that have been banned since the beginning of time. Dan, as you said, Where the Red Fern Grows, Ulysses, The Tropic of Cancer, All Quiet on the Western Front, The Grapes of Wrath. Stemming back to the 60s, the 50s, books have always been banned. This is not a new topic. But what is new is partisan think tanks, politicians, and others trying to rile people up to get to the polls in November, to make this an issue. There's not suddenly a new advent of pornography in the libraries, and for what it's worth, please Google the definition of pornography, which is creating something for the purpose of titillation. So I think that the record number of merit scholars that appeared at our October meeting or those qualifying for it show us that FHPS is doing something right. So I think the bottom line is, a lot of these speeches were prepared to yell at you about books before there was even an listening ear about the fact that we have reached a compromise. Yay! We have reached a compromise in having a book review policy. It is here. It's not saying books are all off. It's not saying books are all on. It's saying, "We hear you, parents. We hear that you have been talking about this ad nauseam. We are implementing a policy to let people have alternative options, make things optional, and explore other avenues." So thank you for that. I also want to call attention to the fact that, yes, at that meeting at the library talking about SEL, a few things were suggested to parents, such as declining any help from a counselor and encouraging kids to not take the victim card that public schools has handed to them. So I have to ask, is encouraging them to not call a suicide hotline or see a counselor the actual child abuse that we should be worried about instead of an optional book on a shelf that people can sign a waiver about? That's my concern, is keeping kids alive. We also heard just now about contagious behavior and learning from others, and I think we've seen a lot of examples of behavior that could be inspiring our students to act a certain way in a classroom. Just have to throw that out there. But most importantly, what I want to call attention to is the fact that there are things that the public does agree on together. Having buses regular, having recorded meetings, having budget transparency for which, for what it's worth, there is an entire webpage on the website with everything you want to know about how the money is spent, supporting bus drivers, having an overnight disgust about Mackinac... Mackinaw. Sorry, I'm from Wisconsin. Anyway, the point is, is that there are things that we can actually spend valuable time talking about that are related to this district and not driven by a political think tank trying to get people mad about a topic that's actually been here for the longest time in America. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name and address are on file with Officer Swoda, if you would like it, but I will not be giving it out because there's doxing and hate speech that goes on all the time from some people in the community. I'd like to speak tonight on a pernicious lie that has continued to be spread by some members in this community about other members in this community without challenge in the local media. There's been a repeated false claim that there are some dark money organization that is funding those of us who have been asking for transparency and accountability from the superintendent and the school board for the better part of the last two years. With zero evidence, these false and malicious claims have repeatedly been made by the local media about the concerned parents, grandparents, custodians, friends, and taxpayers in Kent County who have politely been asking for transparency and accountability from this superintendent and board. Not a single media entity has asked the individuals making these false claims for evidence of this alleged funding. I'm here tonight to not only dispel this myth, but also ask those who continue to promulgate it to provide any shred of evidence to support their malicious lies. The irony of this claim is that there is at least one board member who has actually donated to the organization that has been regularly disrupting these meetings with their snide comments, snickers, and cackling, and attempting to silence anyone who disagrees with their radical Marxist viewpoints. This donation, in my humble opinion, presents a severe conflict of interest. Additionally, the projection from that organization has now backfired on them. Be careful what you wish for because your nightmare might actually come true. We aren't going anywhere, and I'm happy to announce that, as of today, our group of concerned citizens has officially formed an organization which will allow us to raise funds in order to ensure that our elected officials and their chosen hires are transparent and accountable in all of their official actions. See you at the next meeting and enjoy your night.
My name is Paul Doyle, and unlike some people here, I'm not here to push ideology or politics. I'm here to work towards solutions, as I've been doing for several months. Many of you know I've been driving a bus for five months after beginning the process seven months ago. When I spoke with the Director of Transportation back in September, he said that they needed eight full-time drivers at that point. I agreed to drive full-time until the department could become fully staffed or through the remainder of this current school year, whichever came first. Today, the department has vacancies for nine full-time drivers. This week, there are nine routes with planned suspensions or cancellations. There are another two routes being covered by office staff that would otherwise have been suspended or closed. If someone calls in sick, their route will be canceled. I'm told that, on average, one person per day cannot come to work because of illness or other conflicts. Needless to say, in the seven months since I began driving, it could be argued that no real progress has been made. Actually, it would appear the district is in at least a slightly worse position than it was seven months ago. Efforts that the district has made to solve the problem have, at best, only prevented things from getting worse. It would be fair to say that the transportation department will not be fully staffed this school year. Perhaps more importantly, as things stand today, it can be predicted that the transportation or bus driver problem will be as bad in the 22-23 school year as it has been this year. The administration and the school board should acknowledge this. It is my opinion that the community should be informed of this. One thing is clear to me. We need to do things differently, much differently. I've learned a great deal in the seven months, and I'm working hard every day to learn more. My goal and my hope is to find a way to avoid route cancellations for the 22-23 school year, and I'd like to invite the community to join me. Because of the shortness of my time tonight, I would like to make three requests of the board and of you, Dan. Number one, please give me a block of time at the next board meeting to share a summary of what I've learned and to begin to identify some ways to possibly work towards solutions. Number two, allow me, with your support, to convene a task force made up of representatives of the community, staff, and a cross-section of other stakeholders and experts to more actively work on better understanding the problem, why it exists, and what possible solutions might be devised. And three, gather comprehensive, accurate, and complete data on the situation in all districts in Kent County. The number of vacancies they have, the number of routes and cancellations, if any, the total compensation that are provided to their drivers inclusive of wages and benefits, and report this in a normalized comparative format so that the community can truthfully see how Forest Hills compares to all other districts in the county. This information should be made public. This is all in the name of working on real problems and working towards solutions. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
My name is Justin Ruder. I live at 7414 Sheffield Drive. Got two daughters and Forest Hills Central. Just want to say thank you to the board. Dan Beem, I know you guys spend a lot of your time, personal time, to solve a lot of hard issues, some of it I may agree with, some of it I may disagree, not agree with, but can say I did get excited about one book. I heard about an advanced geology book. I'm a geologist, so I was pretty excited about that. Not so excited about the other books I heard about, but, you know, so it is. I am concerned about two things. I am concerned about busing. A lot of that's been brought up already. I have girls, and I need to get them to school. I didn't have a bus, I think, five or six weeks this year, of course, last year. I also play sports. My wife and I both work. A lot of times, we have all-the-time games. Games start at 4:00. I don't get out of work till 5:00. My wife lives a half hour, works a half hour away. She doesn't get out of work till 4:00, so it's often a challenge. So I'm urging you to come up with a solution. I know you're working on it, but those solutions have not been successful, and they have not accomplished what we need in a timely manner. So I hope that you continue to work on it. My daughter's got a soccer game Wednesday in Gaul Lake. It's an hour away. She has to be there at 4:15. My wife and I still don't know how we're going to get her there. We're going to find a way, but it's not easy. So I urge you to keep working on a solution. This gentleman here seems like he's going to be able to be helpful. I just have another request, and this has to do with sports. Again, I love sports. My daughters love playing them. I think it's great for them. But my daughter played JV basketball. We play pay-to-play. I grew up in the UP. I could play any sport. I didn't have to pay anything. And so we're pay-to-play. We had a fundraiser. I think my daughter raised $300 or $400. Her teammates raised lots of money, too. Her uniform doesn't match. Her shorts don't fit. They're hand-me-down boy shorts. And I'm just thinking to myself, how in a district like Forest Hills Central... You know, the district I grew up in was like, poor, UP town, you know, lower-middle-class, and we had matching uniforms that fit us. Here, we're pay-to-play and fundraisers and all this other stuff, and she doesn't have a pair of shorts that fit her. So, you know, I hear the budget numbers, you know, like these $9 million being thrown around, and, you know, there's a lot of good things going on in this district, but obviously there's some things that could improve, and I just respectfully ask that you listen to these requests and try to address them the best you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Skank. Live in Ada. Father of five who've gone through the Forest Hills Central School System, either in or through, from pre-K on up. First of all, I want to thank the board for this forum. I'd like to thank the parents who made the time to come here, three hours on a weeknight away from family. Says a lot. I guess about 140 people came tonight. Might represent up to 2% of the district. What possesses so many people to show up? I think there's a real interest here. There's a real concern. I think the board might want to consider why that concern exists because it probably isn't natural. Now, I first started coming to the board meetings about six months ago, and I want to thank every parent who's been here in the last six months because I have learned more about my children's school from them than I ever have from their teachers, from their administrators, and from the board. Communication is a concern. You hear it with transparency. You hear it with requests for streaming. You hear it in their voices. Now, taking a page from the support for Forest Hills Public School System posting to keep it topical. So I'm not going to reach any further back than last Friday. Last Friday, half-day, I asked my kids how their day went. They said, "It was terrible. We didn't do anything." More than 50% of their classes had no academic content. No academic content. One of them, in a mandatory class, played a game called Guess My Mental Illness. Wow. Topical. Let's show some compassion. Let's show some inclusion. Let's show some consideration for people who actually have a mental illness. Okay, let's move on. Friday evening, my high school had a play. The playbill advertised cannabis. Well, that makes sense. A Schedule I controlled substance advertised to our children. I mean, what are we thinking? Now, I actually hold a controlled substance license. I know what this poison does. I can't believe that it's advertised to our kids. I have kids and classmates who went to that play unchaperoned, and they got that playbill. Okay, keeping it topical. Let's move on. Let's talk about a parent who I first saw here, and I said I learned a lot, who complained about the bullying that was going on in one of their sports programs, that the parent was concerned was not addressed, bullying that still persists to this day, bullying one of the children just quit the team because of, and there's no forum or feedback. Keeping it topical. Thank you.
Are there any more comments? All right. I think that wraps up the business portion of our... Oh, all right. Here we go. Nope, you're okay.
I was not planning on speaking tonight. I do have a few things that I did jot down.
Can you state your name, please?
Sure. My name is Melissa. The Mackinaw trip. The paperwork came home quite a while ago. I'm not sure of the date. And it specifically said that no child would be left behind if they could not come up with the funds. So once the email came out that there wasn't going to be an overnight trip any longer, it didn't... There were no reasons given. It just said for, quote, "various reasons," is what the email I read, said various reasons. And my child himself was told that it was because of mental illness. And he said that he and his class asked his teacher to elaborate, and the teacher didn't really have anything to elaborate, and I believe that's true. I do. I have another mother-parent friend that called the school and was told that the principals were called in, in a group. I don't know if it was high school or just middle school. I'm not sure. But that they were not allowed to speak about it. They weren't allowed to get their voice in, you know, any comment, edgewise, anything of that sort. There's another mother who reached out to me via text, and she said, "What was your child told?" After I told her what my child was told, she said that her child was told, let's see, "After COVID, too many kids would be sick home to spend the night." Okay. I also heard up here, the board was saying that, you know, with five children, and, you know, that's kind of an odd number, and who do you root out, and whose feelings do you hurt to put in a different room? But I gather that this field trip's been going on as a tradition for quite a while. Okay? I am fairly new here, but I gather that it's been going on for quite a while. So I'm asking, how come this was never an issue before? I mean, are you all trying to tell me that in all the time that this field trip's been going on, or any other overnight field trip for that matter, even athletics, anything like that, there's never been a situation where there's maybe like a third wheel or a fifth wheel, if you will? So why now, is what I want to know. Okay? I'm not expecting an answer, an actual verbal answer, but that's what I'm asking you. So I guess, in a sense, what I'm saying is, I know there has to be other reasons, and I know that they're not being fessed up. That's all I can say. Okay? I don't think anyone believes that... You know what? I'm going to move on because I want to say one more thing about the books and a little boy, if you'll give me just one more minute.
We've got to wrap it up. Everybody's sticking to three minutes. Thank you.
Then I'll speak about it without the microphone. There was a little boy in the video that said that people need to learn how to empathize. But I also noticed that some of the people that are in support...
We're going to wrap it up now.
...that some of the people that are in support of these books don't have children in the school district anymore.
Okay. Thank you for sharing, Melissa. Thank you. No, Melissa, we're going to wrap it up now. Thanks. Everybody's been really great tonight with sticking with the three minutes. I need you to stop now. Everybody has been sticking with three minutes. Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Okay. Any other comments? Oh, we've got one more. Okay. Any other comments? Oh, we got one more.
My name is Kelly Anderson, and I live in Old Darby. I'm here because I also wanted to know about the Mackinac trip for my son. He was told the same thing today, that it was canceled because of mental health concerns. I also kind of had a similar thought. This trip has been going on for years, so some of the reasons given earlier didn't make any sense to me. I can't imagine that these are all of a sudden new issues just this year. Also kind of wanted to understand or ask, is this the only overnight trip that's being canceled? I know banned trips just came back from a week in Florida. I know there's other overnight trips that are happening across the school district, so I don't know if this is now a new policy for all of them or if we're just looking at this for the eighth graders. My son was fortunate enough to be able to go to Camp Henry before COVID hit, but I know Orchard View, those kids missed out, and the one day at Camp Henry was not equivalent to what my son experienced. And now those kids are also missing out on Mackinac. And I know my son was looking forward to it as well, so I would just kind of like to ask for you guys to reconsider or talk about the real issue as to why this was all canceled, so maybe the parents can help come up with a way to help. I don't know exactly what's going on, but just some transparency would be good.
Thanks, Kelly. Anybody else? All righty. Okay, at this time, looking over our agenda, it looks like we've wrapped up some great stories, all of our business. If there is no other communication from the board, I think I need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn this meeting of the board.
I second. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.